Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town in Dewey Beach Monthly Town Council Meeting. It's being held at the Dewey Beach Life Saving Station as well via Zoom. It is October 17th, 2025, and it is 3:00. With that, I'd like to open the meeting by convening it and ask for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to apply United States of America to the Republic of Stated One Nation under God.
Thank you. Next item is roll call. Commissioner Bauer.
Present.
Commissioner Gibbings.
Here.
Commissioner Juzinski.
Present.
And Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
Mayor Bill Stevens here, so we have a quorum. Next item is, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item is for public comment for non-agenda items. One of the things that we will be doing is keeping track of the time. So if you have any public comment you'd like to make on non-agenda items, please come up to the podium or wave to Kate via Zoom. Take care.
Hi, my name's Harry Gallagher. I guess like November, last November, I made a statement regarding the trash removal. And since then, on recommendation by the town manager, you all adopted the revision or the new contract. But I've since learned that the company is now charging for delivery of your trash bins. Now, that was never in the original contract, as far as I could see at this point. So I think that's, you know, in my opinion, I think that was a material, material issue that really, that they added that on to the contract. So I don't know whether you could look into that or not, but I don't see that in this original, you know, the original contract that was extended. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Daryl Helms. I, and I have two things. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to speak on it. One is the provider that is cutting the trees for the, right away for the electrical companies. They just pretty well just go down through and cut. They leave debris. They, they just leave it. And the street is a mess. And from Jersey through to Chesapeake, it, you could say it was from the storm, but it's not. It's from them just chopping down through. And I'm at 23 Jersey Street in the corner, and it's still laying out in front of our property. Now, it's in the town right away, but the question is what, and we called them, and they basically said, that's the town and your problem is the property owner. It's like, wait a second, I didn't cut these down. So that was one issue. And then the second, the status of the, I know there was a survey put out on the permitting and currently the cost of labor and materials and everything else. You supersede the permitting requirements as soon as somebody walks on your property. If it's even to pick up one old deckboard and put down another, you need one. And so just the status of that, those two items.
Thank you, Daryl. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We will address those. Next reports, committee reports. Commissioner Bauer.
We have a marketing committee chair now, and our first meeting is scheduled, Kate, what's the date? Was that the 4th?
Oh, that sounds right.
At 5:00 PM. And there's a, we, you know, on our last meeting, we put in a new focus and, you know, some, some good things to do. So Patrice will do a great job with that.
All right. Commissioner Persinger.
The Charter and Co. Committee is scheduled to meet on October 27th, I believe it is. And their primary agenda item will be really be to take up the permitting issue that was just mentioned a few moments ago and to see where we go with that and some of the associated issues around, around permitting and business licenses potentially as well. The Resiliency and Sustainability Committee is scheduled to meet, I think, Kate may have the most recent information on this, November 7th, perhaps? That was, that was the last date that I heard. They are planning to come together to talk about the sustainability project that we talked a bit about at the last meeting. They are collecting some more information. I believe they have another potential contractor who's interested in this project. So hopefully we'll be able to get this back on this agenda, this, this town council's agenda for the November meeting and hopefully come, perhaps come to a decision on that project.
Do you have a, do you have a proposal for them?
We have a proposal from one of the, yeah, but not sure exactly what the status is on all the pieces here, but we have to pull that together.
Good. Commissioner Gibbings?
The Investment Finance Committee meets again on November 3rd at 5:00. And a reminder that we're holding a budget workshop on December 8th at 3:30.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Juzinski?
Nothing scheduled on for sure.
Okay. Town Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. Just want to remind everybody, we do have trick or treating come up. The police will give a little more information on that. That's the 23rd through the 25th, with the 24th being the night of the trick or treating. And then, of course, they'll have a haunted graveyard dance party for the kids down near, near the rudder. So, and like I said, the police will get more information on that. We expect a lot of people in town. If we could bring up the pictures of the new town hall, you can see this is the third floor of the town hall. And the way the town hall is being built, this is the third floor. It's an eight-inch concrete deck that they're pouring there. And what's going to, what they did, just like they did on the second floor, those steel red cables that you see going through there, they go all the way out to the walls. And then as the concrete hardens, they pull those, those cables tighter, and that's what holds up these, these decks. So they expect to pour that on Monday, but the problem is rain's going to be on Monday, so it may be going in on Tuesday. But once they pour that, that's the last big piece of major concrete. They still have to do the elevator shaft in one stairwell or two stairwells, and then the major concrete operation will be over. Then it's going to be putting up the walls and moving forward. So we're moving right along, and we hope to have the roof on, or at least, at least the, the roof truffles on around Thanksgiving. So we're really looking forward to that, and we've got continued pictures there. We're moving right along. The weather did hinder us a little bit. You know, we did have a fire up on Carolina Street. Great job by the police department and some of the neighbors to locate that fire for us so we could get the fire company out there as quickly as possible. And we just want to thank the Rehoboth Beach Volunteer Fire Company and the EMTs for getting out there. There were three firemen that were treated and later released. But again, thank you up to the fire company. Next, we had a vehicle come up Sunday morning, hit the Center Island there at Reed Street and Route 1 northbound. The police will talk about that a little more. I was just on the phone with Byers. That's about $45,000 worth of damage, counting the light pole that, that was taken down and about 12 of the six-by-six posts. And again, the police will talk possibly a little bit more, more about that. Next is the flooding. The police in the town did a great job. We coordinated with Sussex County Emergency Management, the Fire Department, Rehoboth Police Department. But I mean, the flooding is what it is when we have storms like that. You can see what's going on there. It's Van Dyke Street. All the streets were flooded. It did cross Route 1 just south of, south of Dewey Beach. And that's there on Reed Street. That was probably the worst flooding we had, and that goes all the way up to, to Grotto's, as you can see. Next is paving. Paving's getting ready to start. Originally, they wanted to start October 15th, and again, this is Del Dot doing the paving. It's not the town. You can see from this picture, the roads that are in green belong to the state. The roads that are in white belong to the town. Now, there are some roads down there that you see Dickinson Street and some of the other streets. They, they've been previously paved, so they aren't going to be paved again. But the ones you see in green are going to be paved on or about November 15th, they're saying now. They're finishing a job up in, up in Milton, and they're going to start in the north, work their way south, and they're, they're going to put cones and signs out when they get ready to do that street the day before to let the folks on that street know. We're going to put out in the newsletter and the information there also with a phone number and an email address for, for Alan Myers' team that's going to be actually out there doing the work to repave the streets. So they're going to mill it first, and then they're going to pave it. And the town's going to get five truckloads of milling that we can use around town to fill in in some of the lower spots. Trash collection. So trash, there's been a, been a problem this year with, when you get the bill, there's a number on there that says, call if you have any questions about your bill. It puts you to a group up in Vermont, right? That's where they're, they're stationed up there. That's not supposed to happen anymore. What happens is when you call that number, it does go to Vermont, but then automatically, as soon as you say you're with Dewey Beach, they switch it down to Millsboro. And that's the, the phone number directly to Millsboro and email address there. The ladies in the front office have that information when people call and complain about trash, and they say, hey, we're talking to somebody up in Vermont. No, it's supposed to go directly down to Millsboro. We met with the supervisor the other week, and I will bring up your question, sir, about the delivery of the cans and see if it's in our new contract that we did this year. Beach mats are getting pulled up right now. That should be done probably mid-next week. We're going to take the mats up that are from, towards the middle of the dune down, get those rolled up and get them out of the way so they're not affected by any storms. We have, we have started an analysis of the police department. We have brought in retired State Police Captain Greg Warren, who did the analysis back in 2019. He has started to do his analysis again. Basically, it's hitting the same format as we did back in 2019. We want to show where we currently are since 2019 here in 2005. The analysis was, has already been paid, was paid with last year's budget money, and we're moving forward with that. We hope to have that analysis done in a draft sometime in the first week of December and have it presented, Captain Warren presenting it to the commissioners either in December or in January. So we're looking forward to the results of that and getting those put out. You know, donations for the new town hall, there's the, you can buy a brick for $300. There's three different lines, each have 20. We encourage folks to do that. And there's also a wall that you can donate, donate to. We want to thank the Civic League for their current pledge to the town. And we also, there's several others we'd like to thank. I'm not sure it's appropriate that we thank. I don't know if they want their names put out there at this time, Mr. Mayor, so we're going to hold off on that. Dewey Goes Pink went over really well, no major problems. The lieutenant may want to bring some things up or not, but there was really no problems. November 1st is the History of Dewey Beach from 1962 to present day. That's November 1st in the Sunset Room at the Hyatt from 4:00 to 6:30. From 4:00 to 6:30, limited seats, so go online and get your ticket for that. I will contact EP and L about the tree limbs down there, and either they will pick them up or we will pick them up this coming week. Thanks for bringing it to my attention. Pending any questions, sir, that's all I have.
Any questions, Town Manager? Just as a comment, Bill, I had, had asked the other wave sponsor if we could thank them, thank them personally, and just thanks to Jimmy O'Connor, who has donated to be at the highest level of our donation for town hall. Thank you. Lieutenant, updates?
Yes, sir. So I'm going to start with the stats for the month, which I am thoroughly pleased to look at. The numbers seem to have significantly reduced going into the offseason, which we thoroughly enjoy. But for the month of September, we had 421 calls for service. We made two criminal arrests. There was 114 traffic citations and 340 hours of enforcement hours. 13 accidents, 10 parking tickets, eight civil citations, and there were three DUIs. One was done by the Bethany Beach Police, and I'll get into that in a moment. I did want to bring to your attention, I spoke to Donald Robinson, who was our court liaison. If none of you are familiar with Donald Robinson, he's worked for the police department for several years as a police officer. Now he is our court liaison. He wanted me to read this letter to the, to the town. As a result of our community service program, we're able to positively affect the lives of 34 young visitors to our lovely town. As a result of the program, these young adults completed 680 hours of community service to the town of Dewey Beach in exchange for the dismissal of the minor charges committed within the town. This one-time proposition and these subjects are not afforded this opportunity again. So basically, we had these young people do everything from pick up trash to, they, they helped us with the community day at the Lions Club. It really shows that, you know, us reaching out to them in a positive way and trying to change their life by going through the community service program has really affected them and has really helped the town. So I just want to thank Donald Robinson for putting this together, and he did a wonderful job.
That was great, I think.
It was great. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been, you do 680 hours of community service and you put one person at that task for picking up trash or do, I mean, that's, that's a lot of money. It's high call savings to the town. Going on to the storm, obviously, we monitored the storm, you know, more than a week before it got here. You know, in our opinion, sometimes northeast storms can be way worse than a hurricane due to the fact that it can linger and, and obviously, if you look back to the 62 storm, it can cause more damage than we can even handle. We work closely with the Fire Department, with Sussex County Emergency Operations Center and DEMA. And in my opinion, I, I think we were very lucky. We, we sustained very little damage. It was more of a nuisance with the trash laying around and stuff that washed up. But as a result, you know, in our after-action reports, we were, we were pleased. You know, Bill and I spoke a lot about this storm and the potential of what it could have caused, and it did not. So we're, we're very happy, our, all of our town maintenance, the police, we were very safe and we made it through it. As a result of this too, one good thing is, Phil and I were discussing, we're, we've already purchased five pair of chest waders for our, our employees because there are some spots we can't get to with our vehicles. You know, historically, we've had the military vehicles. We do not have them anymore. You know, that's something maybe we can look at in the future, but for now, we do have a way to get back to these unreachable areas with these chest waders. So thanks, Bill, for helping us out with that.
I think it's important to point out, the, the pump station on Bayard Avenue, that's a million-dollar investment 10 years ago on that pump station. It worked very well during this storm, even though the water breached the burn. They pumped the water back over and it, and it did a good job. And those waders, when our maintenance teams go down there and it's three or four feet deep to get to that pump station, these waders are really going to help.
And they're also insulated, keep everybody warm, especially in the winter time, this is going to happen again. The fire, we, we called in assets to assist the Fire Department for the fire. You know, obviously, we're there to secure the scene and just to give extra support to the Fire Department. They did a phenomenal job. They were there very quickly. If you look back at our histories of residential house fires in this town, it's not good. I mean, when one goes up, especially in a, in a coastal storm, in the middle of a coastal storm, a lot of them have resulted in multiple structure fires. In this case, the Fire Department was there very, very rapidly. They got the fire contained in a very short amount of time. I would say within, within a half an hour, that fire was to the point where it only infected the houses that surrounded the number 12, number 14, I believe it is, Carolina Street. But they did a phenomenal job. They worked together. I don't know how many Fire Departments were there, but I saw Indian River, Millville, I mean, from all around this area, there was probably 15 fire trucks there, and they did a phenomenal job. Sea Witch coming up this weekend. We have our operation plans almost completed. We are working in conjunction with Del Dot, us. Rehoboth Fire is very aware of what, what is going to happen. They're going to have people on standby, ready to help us if need be. We expect a very large turnout as usual. Seems like every event in this town grows every year enormously. So we're going to assist Dewey Beach Business Partnership and give them whatever they need. We're, we're ready to roll on that one. Dewey Goes Pink was a phenomenal success for us. We, with the crowds, if anyone saw it, it was, it was outstanding how many people arrived at that event, and it was a massive effort between us and the, and all the other first responders that assisted in the run and the security of the event. We had zero problems. There were several medical issues, but that was it. And the event concluded, but everybody had a smile on their face. Which leads me to the car accident that occurred on Sunday morning of last week. Phil did show you some pictures as a result of that crash. I just want to make you all well aware of how serious that accident really was. That vehicle was reported to us by the Sussex County Communications Center that it had struck several vehicles down in Bethany Beach, and it left Bethany in an unknown direction. Our officers immediately went to the south end of town where they observed the vehicle coming into town, right there in Indian Beach. They got behind the vehicle, and obviously, the vehicle was swerving down the roomway, and they were traveling at about 60 miles an hour when they came in, come into town. When they got to the area of the police department, Rodney Avenue, the vehicle started to swerve over into the, into the median. It got into the turn lane, proceeded northbound in the turn lane and collided with the, the Dewey wave and the light pole at about 60 miles an hour. The officers called out the collision, which in turn, the vehicle rolled over three times, traveling in the northbound lane. So it crossed over the northbound lane, rolled over three times. It was a newer Twitter pickup truck. And us watching the, the video, the after-action, we, we noticed that there was two people standing right next to that vehicle as it was rolling down the highway, right under the opal. There were two pedestrians that were there. They were not on, they left immediately, so we weren't able to contact them. But the seriousness of that accident was, was, it was immense. And the, the property damage that occurred, we're going to move forward with restitution through Delaware Superior Court, through the court process, so we hope to recover that money as well. So is there any other questions for me?
I was, I just want to say, I was downtown at the time of the crash, and I heard it. I was like, what is that? It was so loud.
It was, it was intense.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, that's the fifth light pole in five years that we've had taken out by a group of drivers.
And if, if no one understands those light poles, they, I, you know, I've dealt with these things so many times. The original light poles came from Del Dot back in the 1970s. They were all 995, and they were sitting in some storage yard somewhere. Then when the town incorporated, they brought those poles down, and I think they just gifted them to us. They do not make those poles anymore. So they actually have to, every time that one of those poles is taken down, it has to be manufactured, and it's, it's not cheap. So just to throw a little history lesson out there to you.
Well, thank you for everything that you guys have done, obviously, to always keep us safe and for the actions.
First question.
Yes, sir.
Sorry for interrupting, but I wanted to catch you before it started.
Can you come to the microphone, sir?
Yeah. This meeting's being broadcast and...
Yeah, yeah, I know. I was trying to keep it informal.
I'm Perry Roberts. I live on Carolina Street, and I live across the street from the house that caught on fire. It's, you know, you guys did a great job. Because it, you know, I remember the fire on Silver Lake three or four or five years ago, and there was like five houses that went like that. And we had embers in our driveway that were that big. So great job. My question is a simple question, and it may not even be an answer. Do you know what happened, what, what started it? Any idea how it got?
We do not, sir. And that's, I, I would have to direct you to the Delaware State Fire Marshal to answer that. We know that the house was unoccupied. Luckily, there was no one inside the house. The residents that lived there have, have passed away over the years, and the, the families...
Yeah, oh, I know them all.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, luckily, there was nobody in there. The Fire Marshal is doing the investigation, so at this time it's in there.
If the Fire Marshal, will they, will that be a public report if they come up with an opinion or?
I, I'm, I'm not aware of that, sir. You'd have to direct that to them. I can't answer that.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep. But if you like, I can direct you to the investigator to handle in case you might be...
Well, if they, if they can't talk to me, then there's probably, you know, probably get that, right?
I have a bunch more.
Yeah, active investigation. And I, and I understand that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I figured I'd ask the question. I didn't figure anybody would...
I do think it's likely that once their investigation is completed and, and signed off on, that that would create a public record that you'd have access to. Any questions of the lieutenant council? Not seeing any, we'll move on. No one from the chamber is here, so we'll get into the heart of the agenda. Item A, review September financial reports. Ms. Hall, do you want to contribute anything? I know the, the reports are available online, so please feel free to take a look at it. Ms. Hall.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're halfway through fiscal year '26, and things are looking positive. As we prepare for the FY '27 budget process and a potential budget amendment in December due to all the grant activity that we've received, there will be further explanations right now as to what revenues that have come in that offset expenses and... Because the grants do not match, the, the revenues don't match up line for line with the expenses. So we're going to explain that further. Also, analysis of the expenditures through the first six months is being conducted. So when staff meets with department heads later this month, everyone is on the same page as we start the new budget process and making any amendments we need to, to next year's budget or adjustments. As far as the financial reporting, the staff is eager to work with Commissioners to set up a reporting model that gives Commissioners and the public full confidence in the financial well-being of Dewey Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Just as a summary, for those that have not, have not looked at it, through the month of September for our fiscal year, which begins April 1st, we are $848,000 better than we had budgeted from a revenue perspective, and $373,000 more in expenses resulting in a $430,000 positive performance over the last six months, which is incredible. Any questions for Ms. Hall? Todd, can you take? Okay. Garrett?
What was the, the last thing you just had, the $430,000?
If the, we had budgeted 415 on the net operating budget performance, and that actually was $844,000, which is a $430,000 difference.
Oh, okay. Where do we stand with trying to develop better coordination between the operating summary and the unassigned file?
We are going to, I have talked to Ms. Hall about that earlier this week. We're going to continue to work on that when I get back.
Okay. Cancelled your vacation?
No, no. Any other questions from Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Sheena.
Thank you, Sheena. Item B, review the 2025 Dewey Beach Patrol Stats Report. Captain?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, people. Todd Fritschman, Dewey Beach Patrol Captain. My objective today is to provide the statistics review for the 2025 summer season. Generally speaking, before we get into the data, it was a very successful summer. The data will show that. It was very status quo until the month of August and the northeast winds hit, then things changed, and we got extremely busy and everything seemed to happen. But the outcomes were all successful. The beach facility in terms of users was hot, heavy and high. We had a, a large crowd. Weather was very conducive the entire season, but it did end rapidly right after the Labor Day weekend. The crowds dissipated, and there was not much of a shoulder season after that, that final weekend. The Dewey Beach Patrol Command Structure this year, myself as captain, part-time Lieutenant Mike Thompson, Senior Lieutenant Liam Zopper, Jason Kaiser, Lieutenant CJ Fritschman, Patrick Williamson and Ben Sala, all performed exemplary this summer in their roles as in leadership for training and overseeing their sections and making sure that their, their sections were performing to their best ability. The requirements of the patrol are listed in the report. I won't go through all that right now, I'm in the essence of time. Daily operations, there is a flow chart available so that if anyone wants to see how our functions occur, 8:30 AM is my assessment in the morning. So the facility gets fully inspected every day before we go on duty to make sure there's no hazards and hindrances, wash-in hazards, intoxicated or unconscious, unresponsive people, burning fires, whatever there may be on the facility in the morning that we have to address before the day starts. And then we clear the water about 10 minutes to 5, make sure everyone is out and understands that we are indeed going off duty, and then we signal and, and sign off at 5:00 PM. Then the staff has till 5:30 PM to bring back all their equipment, radios, throw everything away and, and punch out for the, for the day. The services that the Beach Patrol provides are emergency medical. That is a huge one. As we get into the statistics, it was a very significant service this season. Actual saving of, of lives well before advanced-like support were able to arrive. A handicap access service. We do provide the transport of all the handicap people from their point of pickup down to the facility, and we work and manipulate the wheelchairs around to accommodate all the handicap visitors to the town. Beach event management. We've got a lot of things that occur on the beach. We've got yoga classes, we've got volleyball tournaments, weddings, whatever it may be. So we do our best to make sure that everybody is compliant with town permitting and following the rules and regulations of cleanup and managing their operations correctly so that it's not infringing upon the passive beachgoers in their events. Beach ordinance enforcement. As you know, we enforce the ordinances for alcohol. Whatever beach ordinances may be violated, we intervene. We regulate all sports activities to accommodate the user to the best of our ability, but also to protect the passive beachgoer from flying objects and sports activities. That was a challenge, just like every year, because of the entitlement type attitude that people have and they feel as though they have the right to play football or play soccer or other things that get in the way of your passive beach user. We do the marine mammal and avian reptile stranding reports and disposal. That was pretty heavy this summer with dead birds washing in. We had some big sea turtles and a few sharks that wash in. Dewey is conducive, just by natural topography, for wash-in things to come in because we have a cove-like situation along our coastline. So we get a lot of the animals that wash in here from being struck. And we work with the mayor institute. They have a formal process under federal guidelines that we've got to report to them if and when we have a dead or stranded marine reptile or mammal that comes in. Obviously, our junior lifeguard program was extremely successful. We had over one hundred participants this year. They're a super program. We try to make that better each year, although it's just about as good as it can get. The program continues to grow. We do charge for that now. So the town handles that through the central offices on payments and registrations and applications. So we just receive those and then we run the program and do the education and the activities. Youth, adult, and recreation program, July second until about the first week of August, where we set up the activities down on the beach here at Dagsworthy Street for adults and youth alike to play basketball, volleyball, lacrosse, tetherball. We set up about fourteen different recreational activities for the public to use. Trash and debris removal and fecal cleanup, that's course every day. We had a great competition team, I'll allude to that. I got to mention some names out of respect for those competitors that put it on the line for the town. And the tent and canopy ordinance assessment every morning and then doing our best to enforce that ordinance so that we were compliant, making sure everyone was compliant, but also diplomatic in that process because this is the first year that we implemented that ordinance. So it seemed to go very smooth for me. I think complaints were limited, half a dozen maybe from town residents that, you know, we can address and discuss. And then we'll go right into statistics. So the open water rescues are separated into two different divisions. Open water rescue, which means if we don't go out to make the rescue, the odds of that person drowning are pretty significant. Open water assist means that the person is in peril and we're being proactive, we're not waiting for them to succumb or get worse. So that is a reactionary or a proactive rescue that we do. So this year, we had fifteen open water rescues and then eighteen open water assists. And again, most of those occurred once that northeast windstorm hit and then followed by a hurricane where we were in prime tourist season. And believe it or not, after interviewing, discussing, well, you probably can believe it, but most of those people that we had to rescue were people that could not swim. They admittedly said, you know, we couldn't swim, we just saw everyone else out there and we thought it was okay. So that's a little odd, especially with the Atlantic Ocean. Emergency medical services was really big this year. We had some very significant traumatic injuries, cardiac arrests, cervical spine injuries, and all the outcomes were positive. At the end of the day, we had thirty-two of those. Major emergency medical rescues mean that we have to, someone's advanced life support and provide basic life support and sustain the patient until advanced life support comes. Minor first aid means we handle that in-house, whether it's a laceration, we're putting on a triangular bandage or dealing with jellyfish stings when there's a hypersensitivity reaction and we apply our remedies for that. So again, thirty-two major responses and twenty-four minor. Missing persons, we had four missing persons this year that we actively recovered and returned them back. Couple of them, we did work hand in hand with PD. We were very successful and between the experience of Cliff, for instance, and myself doing this for so many years, we got it down by now and took care of all the missing persons, even though one of them demanded to go all the way to the Indian River Bridge and back. It was a ten-eighty-one situation and we accommodated that and everything worked out. So it was good. Beach evacuations, we had three beach evacuations. That means we've got to get everyone off for lightning and we've got to do that as fast as we can. So that went well. And then water evacuations were also three times. We had to get everyone out of the ocean for the imminent threat of lightning. So that's statistic. Night patrol was only used during the fifth, let's see, the Fourth of July and the Fifth of July when we have our fireworks or Highway One has their fireworks and City Road has theirs. That is really important, the amount of shenanigans that occur on the beach during those two nights, warrants, having people down there to do the best that we can in trying to prevent fireworks from going on and off. I do recommend, I didn't put it into my recommendations, that something does go out next year to residents of Dewey, property owners in Dewey, because it appears to me that a lot of the fireworks that do get set off, and there's no rhyme or reason to this, some of them are even aimed toward the homes. They're not even aimed out to the ocean. They are residents mainly that are doing this. So, and it gets tough when you're trying to tell someone that you've known for thirty years. You can't be lighting these Roman candles off. There's ordinances against it, it's against the law, and then having to go bicker back and forth. So some type of outreach, maybe in a mailing or whatever, to say, hey, no fireworks, it may be a reminder to prevent potentially things that have happened already. Civil code violations, we only had one hardline police intervention request. So that was pretty mild relative to other summers where we've had, you know, up to twenty in the past. I think the town is going through a good learning curve and we've done a better job of educating and reaching out and so forth. Tetherball, of course, we run at least sixteen tetherball stations a day. Makes Dewey Beach a very unique situation and if you're observant and watch those, they're used all day, every day by little infants and I've seen people in, elderly play in the game as well. So it's very well-received. I don't know of any other beach that does it like that, but it's great novelty for the Handicap access chair use, we had over three hundred provisions. It's like three hundred and ten. So that's significant. That means we, you know, picked up and brought back three hundred and ten different people to use the beach in handicap as opposed to letting them physically try to do that themselves with a family member and potentially run into some kind of problem. It's a, it's very physical activity to push somebody over to, through the sand and the dunes. So we assume that, so we don't end up with another liability if someone else tried to do it. Competition team, we've already alluded to this, but I'm compelled just to mention the names. We had nine national champions. We've never had anything like that before. Part of it is, you know, we recruit and bring on athletes in their prime, so they are as fast as they can be right now in the time of their lives, but we do have to develop and prepare them. So the lieutenants in the program did a good job of that. I'm not going to go through and mention every, the third, fourth, and fifth, and the eighth and all those places. I wish we had time, but... Men's beach flags, CJ Fritschman, first place, third time national champion in that event, sixth time national champion in all the different things. Steven Hagan was a runner-up in the senior division. Colby Green, he was first place in the teenage division. The men's nine-hundred sprint team, CJ Fritschman, Hunter Jones, Lawson Whaley, Colby Green, all local kids, they're all from the neighborhood, essentially, community people, first place in the nation. The women's sprint team got fourth place, that's great. Men's open sprint, Colby Green was first place in the teenage division. So totaling up about nine national champions and then subsequent other places. Junior lifeguard program, we discussed. Recommendations for future operations, some of these are standard and in every report for obvious reasons. All events permitted to occur on Dewey during our operational period, we requested the town provides to us in advance or a calendar system so we know what is permitted and what isn't permitted. And then if something is occurring without a permit, we can report back and say, hey, there's a course going on down here, a fitness club that's been set up all week, do they have a permit, yea or nay? Dogs and cats leashed when using the facility to prevent any problems from that. Operational start and finish dates that the town would desire for the two thousand twenty-six season, that's not a standard. That changes from year to year, decade to decade, whatever the philosophies are at the time. This last two years have not warranted extended season, in my opinion, but in the past, we've had great weather that has gone into October where our beaches were packed. So those kinds of things we would need to know from the town. Mass marketing and outreach to hotels and motels to continue about the no alcohol on the beach to assist us. We average about fifteen to twenty slips per day or outreaches to people noncompliant with the alcohol ordinance. So that's pretty significant. We have a whole program with that, with foot patrol, that's their duty for the day or my duty in my travels up and down. No motor vehicles on beach other than the vendor from nine-thirty to four PM so that we don't end up with full crowds and full vehicles moving up and down. Let's see. We still recommend a credit card system for the use and reservation of the wheelchairs, the handicap access wheelchairs. That might be something important to better track and also earn a little bit of revenue to deal with replacement of the chairs. That's something that I'm going to have to bring to the table this year, is potentially replace some of the chairs and I didn't have that in my recommendations, but that's still a recommendation. An ordinance that might give us some backing on the ability to control flying objects. We did run into situations this year with noncompliant, people having actual football games amongst the people. And then when we've asked them to stop and cease and desist that activity or move, it became really confrontational because they said there's no law and we have no right to tell them to do that. That occurred with me personally several times where I was called to assist because they would not listen. And so they're right. Now eventually, we just stood there long enough and were so persistent that they did stop, but it wasn't a good feeling. It wasn't a good situation where, okay, we get it, we won't do that. So that's still on the recommendation list. Replacement of any dilapidated lifeguard stands, we'll work with maintenance on that.
We'll do five this year.
Yeah. Okay, very good. And then we'll just need one, the new rescue board, which I work with the town manager on that and that time, oh, I got to, our contributors. So people that donate to the Dewey Beach Patrol exclusively for the purposes of supporting our youth rec program, our junior lifeguard program and our competition team expenses, which is significant, it's several thousand dollars to get people from here to California and back and then house them and feed them and everything. The town contributes and helps with a stipend, which we are grateful for, of course. But Mr. Preston Shell was a major contributor for the competition team and getting them there and back. So if anyone can seize him around, give him a great thank you for that. He did that himself. Highway One Limited Partnership, of course, they run a race every year and the name of the Dewey Beach Patrol and all the proceeds that come in from that race, I think it's all of it, I don't know. So they give us a nice check. Ms. Sheila Candy was a donator. Sally and Timothy McCoy, the Dewey Beach Lions Club provides an annual donation. Ron and Tara Keplinger, DBSS LLC, I felt bad about not putting the name down there, but I couldn't read the name. I couldn't read it.
Dewey Beach Surf Shop.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I did mention it, you know, I was making sure. Dewey Beach Surf Shop, yeah.
You just see that symbol?
See, I just got highlighted.
Okay. Yeah, I should know that. All right, well, I'll never forget. Maria Myers, Ms. Savannah Seagrist, and the Sand Sharks Volleyball Club, Megan Holthclaw and the Rusty Rudder, Woody's Beach Bar and Grill, Gary's Surf and Spray, The Starboard, Grotta's Pizza, and Dewey Beach Yoga. So with that being said, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
As expected, Captain Barry Thero. I, you know, obviously a great year, seeing all the numbers and the stats as low as they were is, you know, it's good luck and good planning at the same time. Right. And I just, one other comment, I happen to know that the Green Boys are actually going to the internationals, correct?
They're going to the, yeah, the international competition, which will be in New Zealand, I believe. They're doing that completely independent, on their own. Obviously, they'll represent the town and the Dewey Beach Patrol, but we wish them the best of luck and we would provide them with any support that they need, but out of all of our competitors that did qualify to go to this, most of them are collegiate athletes. The Green Boys are still local and here in high school and their father, Tim, was heavily involved in all that. So it's a cultural thing for the family as well, so we're going to wish them the best of luck.
It's over Thanksgiving, correct?
Yes.
Do they need security?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Chaperone?
Any questions for the captain?
Nice job, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Nice job. Thank you very much.
All right. Item C, discuss possibly vote to appoint Susan Macy, Lily Gossner, and Rick Schwitter to the marketing committee. Barrett?
Well, a whole lot to say there. I think everybody knows those three people. I motion to approve them to join the marketing committee.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item, discussing the current process for bonfires on the beach and potential safety concerns. This is obviously just a discuss. It has been brought to our attention that they're, by a resident or a few residents, that they're just concerned with the increased amount of winds that they believe are happening on the beach and the bonfires. So we've asked those, if anybody here would like to, from those that do the bonfires, just come up and give us an overview as to the current process, how you evaluate, what's being done, and any suggestions that you guys might have as to how we can improve it going forward.
It's my balls right here, so whatever he says, I do. Mayor, just so, as of today, we've had eleven hundred and forty-six bonfires so far this year.
Incredible.
It's a lot of bonfires.
How you doing? David Lyneum, Lyneum Speed Service. I usually have a cutoff for twenty miles per hour on the bonfires. So if it's, you know, if it's more than twenty, twenty miles an hour, I just tell them that's too windy to have it. And it'd be the same way on the, on the high.
Okay. Is there a certain, like, how far away from the dunes you'd normally put it, how deep the hole goes?
It really depends on the wind direction. I mean, if it's blowing out of the west, you could put it right up to, you know, it all depends on the wind direction, to be honest. So if it's a west wind, you know, I won't have them at the high if it's past twenty, but if it's a west... if it's a west wind and it's blowing more than 20 on the, on the ocean, you're fine. So it just, you know, you just gotta play each one and, and every day is different.
Okay.
Dave, can you describe the type of containers you and Tyler use now for the bonfires? Which really helped with the cleaning up of the beach.
Yeah, we're not, we don't dig uh, holes anymore. We have containers and uh, it really helps, keeps the beach cleaner.
It does.
Uh, I've noticed definitely, I used to, I used to dig them all and then use a pitchfork, you know, so, you know, pitchforks bleed about far apart. So anything, you know, the little stuff I couldn't pick up. So now it's pretty much a hundred percent being picked up. So I've noticed a lot, it's a lot cleaner for sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions?
Yeah, any question?
Can I add to it as well? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The other as well?
Sure. But you said whatever your boss says is fine.
I just, I just wanna add. Tyler Hudson, Dewey Beach Surf Shop, so when it is windy, even if it's below 20, usually Dave and I, we had umbrellas to block off whatever the wind direction is, we'll block it off with umbrellas. That way everything is confined to that one area. So there's not any wind going further than from me to Dempsey or any embers outside or any ash. So it's very close.
And we do have a good line of communication. When we feel at Town Hall that the winds are gonna be too strong, I'll reach out to Dave and I'll reach out to the surf shop and um, Laura or Geno will reach out to the other vendors that may have bonfires. We have sometimes five different bonfire vendors on the beach sometimes. And we reach out to them and say, hey, look, we're gonna have to cancel. And then what we tell the customer is, whether it's, you know, Dave or Tyler have to do their thing with the customer, but the ones that are renting directly are, are um, reservation directly with us, we tell them you can either re uh, do a reservation or another night or we have to refund the money. Sometimes we're refunding uh, many checks, right? Sheena, I mean, we're doing maybe 10, 12 checks sometimes on refunds back to these folks and that, they have to come to me, I have to sign off on them, Sheena has to do them, then you have to sign off on them and go back out. Um, so it is, it's tedious when, when we have to do that, but um, yeah, there's been a lot, I mean, people love having the bonfires on the beach. There's only two other beaches that do it. It's Fenwick Island and the uh, and Lewis. That's it. Nobody else allows them but us.
Thank you, Don. Christian Presser.
Uh, my question's really about the direction of the wind. I think he, he just answered it in part with the, the umbrellas, but if there are multiple vendors there, um, but potentially, is there any standardization of the precautions that those other vendors may take?
So once it gets to 20 miles an hour, I, we, we reach out and try to tell the vendors, you can't do it. What happens is if it's fine at seven o'clock at night, but then by nine o'clock the wind's picked up, we tell folks to call the police department. They go down there and if they think it's too windy, 20 miles an hour or more, the police department can tell them, hey, you gotta shut it down. Then we get phone calls on Monday saying, hey, they shut us down. And then we have to make a decision, hey, what time did they shut down? Nine o'clock? Do we give them a refund or do we say no refund? Uh, yeah, it's tough when you have um, you know, 23 fires on the beach at night. It can be tough.
I guess my concern is um, they've obviously recognized the need to, and you have to, wind is coming from the east blowing back toward, toward houses. They've obviously recognized the need to do something about that. Should we try to standardize that in some sense and require other vendors to do the same thing?
With the umbrellas, some, I don't know if the other vendors.
Can we do that?
I don't know.
I saw Fred's face there.
Yeah, I don't know if the other vendors have umbrellas.
That gentleman's got access to unlimited number of umbrellas.
Yeah, they do, but, but maybe Beach and Bash and some of the other ones, they may not have the number of umbrellas to do something. We can make it a requirement.
Or the number of bonfires scheduled. Do they, as many as two of us do?
No, most, no, they, they do most of the bonfires. But then there's the private citizen that does them also.
I think, I think.
We'd have to require them.
Tyler and I, we need a list from who has the bonfires that night so we know who to turn in. You know, there's lots of people coming down doing bonfires without permits.
So we, we did that.
We just drive by and we, you know, we don't know.
Should there, should there be a differential standard? Let's say, you know, 20 miles an hour overall, but if the wind's coming from the east, you know, maybe 15 is the threshold or something. I, I, I don't know anything about building bonfires or, you know, really.
I think 20 is a good, is the right.
We, we do provide a list to the police department of who's got the approved bonfires down on the beach and if they have time, they go down with the ATV and do the runs. But it only, it, it all depends on a crazy Friday or Saturday night, if they have the time to get down there and do that.
How many complaints did we actually have about uh, the fires?
I have one from one person. I don't know if the mayor had any more than that, but I had one.
I will say over the past couple of years, these past two years are the most complaints we've ever had. And in my recollection, I, I don't ever remember and you guys can speak on this.
We've, we've never had east winds like we've had this year ever on the east.
But in, in the past, I, I've never, I don't remember any issues with the bonfires ever. I mean, Dave, you can probably answer that more than I can, but we've never had any ember spark, any type of brush fire or anything like that. So I think it's safe and I think if we stay on top of it and we work with the town, I, we can, we're, we're not gonna have any problems, I don't believe. It's um, we're, we're gonna probably evaluate, we know that you guys know what you, you've been doing this for a long time. I look at the bonfires like I look at skimboarding. It's part of Dewey Beach. Um, so it has been part of Dewey Beach and as long as we have protocols in place that protect, what I don't want to have happen is to have a, a neighbor complain or one of residents complain, a fire happens in Dewey Beach and then it's.
That's the last thing anyone wants.
Correct. So as long as we put those safeguards in place, potentially have made requiring people to do, other people to do what you guys are already doing. All right. Any questions, Dave? Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Tyler. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to item E, discuss the progress of ordinance 848-2024 approved December 2024 regarding the use of canopies on the beach. Commissioners will review the results of the beach canopy poll circulated in October 2025 newsletter. Mrs. Olper.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when you look at the poll, most of them are against canopies, um, whether it's having canopies on the beach period or whether having them back up against uh, the dune fence, uh, also with the ropes. There were a few that thought that this year, the way we did the, the canopy rules and the enforcement worked out well. There were a few that, that said we didn't do it well. I think there were 43 people that, that took the survey. Some of the folks were property owners. I think a couple of them that I read said they weren't property owners. They were either from like Seabreeze or from the Forgot Mile or, or even, even along the lake and they, they walked through. We, we did, I thought we did a pretty good job this year enforcing and I talked about this last month or the month before. Um, we actually have one of our code enforcement officers go down Monday morning around eight o'clock, walks down the beach and we have these little three by five tags. On one side it gives the ordinance and on the other side it, it, it provides more information about the canopy ordinance and no tents on the beach. Um, of course you come upon a canopy that's set up and nobody's there. You take the, you take the tag, you take the zip tie and you zip tie it uh, to it. And what we found was when you go back on a Wednesday or a Thursday, a majority of those folks that got that warning are no longer doing that. When you go back down at nine, before nine o'clock, they have the folks underneath it. So I usually go back down either Thursday or Friday and walk down the beach and I have the tags and I have the zip tags and usually I come across, um, I come across maybe one or two and on Monday we've averaged about seven. So if you think about it, many people are on the beach during the summer. I don't, I don't think that's a very high number and it was our first year. And our first year for something like this is a real learning experience, right? We wanna educate first and enforcement second, whether it's on, on this type of ordinance or some of the other ones that Captain Fritschman talked about. It's always educate first, enforcement second. So um, I think this year went okay. If the commissioners are gonna make a decision about changing what we currently have, my, my vote would be to, or my, my opinion would be to do away with canopies complete.
Any questions, Mr. Zolper?
Do we get complaints during the season about canopies?
We did. I, I, we'd get emails on the weekend or a text message on the weekend. And with that, I would contact Captain Fritschman to go down and, and check it out. Um, the issue is some folks knew that it was before nine o'clock they had, had to be occupied, but other folks didn't realize, hey, at 10 o'clock, there didn't have to be anybody under it. And so I would get an email or a text that would say, hey, there's somebody there and I'd say, well, what time? And they'd say 10 o'clock and that's, that's allowed. And then I got some complaints about the canopies being too big. And, and we don't have a, a, a rule against the size of the canopies right now. And people thought, cause we had a canopy rule, it also limited the size and we don't have that. So there's, like I said, it's about educating the people. We have signs at each one of the dune crossings. I know one of the, one of the poles, uh, one of the people said we should have bigger signs like Rehoboth. Uh, Rehoboth bought about seven signs uh, towards the middle of their town. They're, they're, they're huge signs that they put on their dune crossing saying what's allowed and what's not allowed. We have 21 dune crossings. I'd have to purchase 21 of these large signs. Um, and especially up the north end, uh, Carolina Street, Chesapeake Street, with the trees and everything, as you go across the dune crossing, do you really want another sign there? We have smaller signs. It has this type of tent's allowed, our canopy's allowed, this type of tent, the canopy's not allowed. And it's actually got a circle with a slash to it. I just think putting larger signs up at the end of some of those streets is really gonna take away from the beauty of the dune crosses.
Why did I think that we did limit how big a canopy can be on the side?
We did.
We did not?
No. Cause I, I did receive complaints about that.
I'm still just worried about managing beach real estate next year. Is, we're not gonna have the beach replenishment. Uh, there's probably going to be less beach, there certainly is now. Um, how are we gonna manage that? Canopies do take up a lot of room. I'm not sure, I'm not recommending anything at this point.
Well, let's take a look at it to get closer to, into next year before the season begins because uh, if anyone's walked out to the beach, we lost a significant amount of beach that nor'easter. So it's uh, it is tiny and I'm hoping God brings it back, but I hope it's not a good strategy. Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Zolper? Anyone from, from town wanna make a comment on this before we move on? Come on, Harry.
Come on, Harry. I read your comment.
Oh, you did read my comment?
Yeah, I read your.
My whole family, okay.
Yeah, I'm a proponent of canopies, but I do, and I did say this last meeting, that if we're gonna, if you're gonna do it, why don't you start like size wise? Instead of like just saying no more canopies, start with a size, I mean, at this point. And then if that doesn't work out, you could go to kind of next season, go to another extreme and, and decide, you know, what to do at that particular point. So I think most of the, I, I know people, people are upset that, you know, they see these canopies set up and there's nobody underneath it. I mean, you know, I mean, that could happen with umbrellas too uh, at, at that point. So you know, if you're looking at both scenarios, you know, people can hog the beach areas with umbrellas the same way. So I mean, as I said, I mean, some of the canopies are immense with the, you know, like a lot of you people have said last time, you know, sticking out different ways and taking up so much space. But I think, you know, you kind of look at the majority of the normal canopies that I've seen, seen down there and I think they're like seven by 10 or whatever, like enough for, you know, three or four people at the most. But the large ones, uh, you know, you're right, they are, they do take up space. So I think, you know, in my opinion at least, you know, you can roll this out, you know, incrementally as far as, you know, limiting, limit, limiting to the space wise of certain canopies, uh, maybe four umbrellas, whatever they, whatever that would be uh, along that. So that's, you know, my opinion again. I mean, I said this last time. Thank you.
No, it's um, I, to Gary's point, to your point, Harry, you know, I, most people do the right thing, but there, when with, because of the real estate, I have, I have witnessed tents almost the size of this room and two people in it. So it's just uh, it's, it's kind of rude is what it is, but uh, you can't always fix that.
Kind of ordinance rudeness.
Yes, you can try. All right, let's move on. Uh, item F, discuss a possible vote on resolution to renew the contract with the town's auditing firm, Mitchell Titus. Commissioner Givings.
We've been working with Mitchell Titus as our auditing firm for the past three fiscal years and they have supported us and encouraged us and helped us make the adjustment to government accounting that we had not done before. Um, our current contract allows us to extend for an additional year and um, with the support of the audit committee, I propose that we do so.
I'd second that.
We'll have to put out for public comment first. Anyone here for public comment on the audit process? Um, discussion, just real quick to understand, this is uh, this are, but if we extend, is that the same price, the same cost as the current year commissioner?
I believe so. I would believe so, but I would ask Ms. Hall to respond to that question.
Oh, I, I looked at the contract. It is, it, it's, it has the option for us to go an extra year at the same cost.
At the same fixed amount. Okay. All right. Um, we do remember we had a problem when we lost our last auditors and the RFP process wasn't as beneficial. So do you want to now move forward?
Motion to, to approve Mitchell Titus for renewal.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Givings. Uh, D, discuss a possibly vote on resolution to transfer 160,000 Town Hall Cap Improvement Fund to general, to the general capital improvement to cover 26, 27 expenditures. Um, I'll give this an overview and then open up a public comment. Um, when, when we created the, the capital improvement Town Hall Fund, we had moved funds from the unassigned and from the general capital improvement to start building those funds so that we could move forward to Town Hall. We have over the last several years, um, created several funds to protect. As everyone knows here, we have the beach fund for beach replenishment in case the federal government does not come back and, and assist us with that process. Um, we've created a rainy day fund in case there's a super storm that we need to take care of our operating performance. Uh, we have an unassigned fund balance requirements that we keep certain amount of expenditures of, of cash available, ongoing operations. We have the streets and infrastructure, which is basically accumulation of set asides as and the Town Hall Fund, which was a half of the hotel tax. There right now is not a mechanism for the overall capital improvements to be replenished. In this past year or the past few months, we had a car accident or a police car accident uh, and it would happen and uh, we had an unexpected expenditure, which is going out and get another police car. Um, so we did not have necessarily have those funds available. Uh, one of the things that I believe might be an oversight and that we can correct going forward and which is why this is here, is to, when we go through and approve the 2026 budget, when the town approaches us and gives us what the capital expenditures are expected over the next few years, that there is a um, consideration of funding the capital improvement to the degree of potentially of the two years or the next two years. So we know that we have those funds that were needed as well as potentially some reserves for that. This is not in any way, shape or form of uh, an attempt to try to move money out of the Town Hall. It's saying, it's, I think it should have been put there to, to begin with. So with that, I'll put it out for public comment and then I'll open up for council for conversation. Kate, I, I forgot you're back, you're back there. Is anyone?
No.
Okay. I'll open up for council for conversation. Commissioner?
Bottom line for me is I don't support this at all. I don't believe, I think we should try to safeguard all of the money that we have going into the Town Hall Fund at this point. I don't think we're at a point now where we can say we simply don't have the, you know, the funds to do it. And we just heard a very positive um, year to date budget performance. Um, I think we need to have a better job. I gotta mention the coordination between uh, our operating performance and what we see in the unassigned fund. The unassigned fund is, is where you will see money that at the end of the year will be available for allocation to other uses. Um, when we approved the budget for this year, we tentatively approved that, that 2026 operating and capital expenditures budget, assuming that 2025 surplus would be sufficient to meet all the obligations um, and projected capital expenditures for FY 2026. That clearly didn't turn out to be, uh, or we wouldn't be asking to take money from the capital uh, expenditure fund for within the Town Hall. I, I think we can wait on this. I think we need to have a better handle on where we're going with respect to our operating budget this year, where we expect to end up, where we, do we think we'll actually have some additional money to devote to capital expenditures? We obviously have to make the expenditures and at some point, we may have to make the decision to take this from the town hall. But I don't think now's the time to do that. There's also, I've got a proposal that I'll talk about just in a minute, where we could actually collect, not collect, but reallocate $35,000 out of our budget if we make a small change in our requirements for our rainy day fund and the minimum requirements for our unassigned balance. So I think, and, you know, I've said this before, I think we need to be better at predicting where we think we're going to end up at the end of the fiscal year and make some decisions on that. I think we did not have good information last year. I think we've made some decisions expecting that we'd have some surplus extra money to devote to these things and it simply wasn't there. So I think we need to do a better job of evaluating that. And again, I would wait to have that better coordination between the operating performance and the unassigned fund and get a better sense of where we're going, as well as consider, you know, where we might draw some other money to devote to capital expenditures. And again, the proposal I have with respect to rainy day fund, the unassigned fund could give us a little bit of extra money.
Question. Is the deadline for us taking action March 30th in this current budget year? Since the money?
If we decide to put together some formal policy so that we have a reserve for, or otherwise, if the capital, right now, if you look at the financial statements, we have a negative fund balance, which doesn't, shouldn't, doesn't exist. We don't have a negative fund balance. If anything, it comes out of our general operators. Gary's saying if we exceed what was in there, it comes out of our operating and therefore it affects the unassigned fund.
So that's where I was getting to. So by the end of the current budget year, we have to have this fixed. What is what I was thinking. But during the budget year, variances in revenue, it's not desirable, but we could have a negative balance for a period of time. Is that a fair statement?
That's fair.
Right.
But we're also, we're also, as a council, going to approve required expenditures as, for, like police cars as they come up. You know, it's like we're not going to not do it.
This is setting a capital account aside, but when it's time to get a police car, we'll still be voting on it again.
Correct.
Okay, so I think sometime in the past two years, because we got this, didn't we get a list, like a five-year projection of the police cars that we were going to need? Didn't we get that in the last two years?
I remember looking at something like that a few years ago.
We made projections of what we thought, I think, in three to four years. So then, but what happened was last year, as you know, we had a vehicle involved in an accident. I think it was a 2016 or 17. So we got the insurance money for that, but it wasn't enough to buy a new car. Then we had another vehicle that was an older car with over 100,000 miles that had major engine problem. We had to make a decision, either spend $11,000 to fix that or get a new vehicle. And we came before council and asked that we could get funding for those vehicles. We couldn't predict that one of our vehicles would be in an accident and the other one that the engine would go bad. But we did project out how many vehicles we did need, just like we do for the lifeguards for their ATVs.
One thing that I'd like to see, I'd like to see something along these lines because I guess stuff happens, you know? Things break down, accidents happen. So I'm not catching that. But I'd like to see where we are in our fleet and not just one or two years. I'd like to see a little bit of the longer term, when we're going to be needing to do something. Because our, our police car costs are definitely going up. And part of that is we have more police officers. Another part of it is you guys are driving stuff that really wasn't in very good shape and that's trying to get fixed. But I would like to see something that helps us really understand where our costs are going to be long-term on a yearly basis, because these do seem to be.
So if you remember correctly, Dave, the 2026 budget packet that was sent over by town hall had a three-year projections on all vehicle purchases. But as we roll into the 2027 budget process, we can expand that and look at the fleet structure.
As far as Commissioner Person's here to comment, I certainly want to make sure it gets fixed this year, right? I don't want it swirling into next year. I don't know that we have to do it at this meeting, especially if you're kind of essentially alleviating a little bit of the problem and we potentially have some budgetary things that we'll have a better picture on after October. We'll have a better picture on, you know, where the budget looks because that's kind of when the bulk of revenues come in. So I don't know that this needs action right now. If there's a reason why it needs action right now, I want to understand what that is.
Well, Commissioner Bauer, Commissioner.
Yeah, is there a deed for it now? To do it in this meeting? We can see 30 days from now. Yeah.
It's a very fair point. Very fair point.
Unless we have to make a decision right now, let's see. We will get more data in a month, so then we'll know if a better idea.
But do we agree that, at least from a mechanic standpoint, that the fund balance should go to zero for capital improvements? That these funds should get to general operating fund? So I don't like, you can't have a negative fund balance. It's just.
I'm not sure to have a handle on that technically in terms of what's the proper account. But I just, I'm reluctant to agree that we take money out of capital expenditure fund for the town hall. We clearly need to plan for capital expenditures. When we, we didn't have a capital expenditure account for many years.
Right.
Until probably three or four years ago. When we had the hotel tax and we said, okay, we have to have a capital expenditure fund. Let's take half of the hotel tax and use that for a capital improvement fund. Well, that worked out fine, but now we're talking about whatever debt we assume for the new town hall, we're going to use that same half of the hotel tax to service the debt on the new town hall. And we're going to try to minimize that debt. And again, that's why I don't want to pull any money out of the town hall fund. Particularly since we're asking other people to donate, you know? It's kind of, you get it in this end, in the other hand, that kind of bothers me a little bit. The other thing I, just to finish is I'd like to see some sort of breakout of why $160,000? Because it's not clear why that's the right amount.
Oh, I thought I provided, Kate, it was, it was the 20, it was the total of 2026 and 2027. Is that your ringtone?
Video games?
You hear that, that's something not good. It was the total of 2026 and 2027.
I think we had to revisit the capital expenditure.
It was, well, man, it's in the budget book that Sheena had provided, it was this total of the 2026, 2027 capital expenditures minus what was already in the account of $112,000 at the end of the audit.
Okay, so as I recall that exhibit and I got it here somewhere, it was, we needed $30,000 for FY '26 and a total of $80,000 for the two years for '26 and '27. That's the way it was written.
Right. My, my assumption was to not bank on the fact that we were going to get two grants for each of the years from the county as from a good service standpoint.
But that also didn't factor in the additional police guard that we approved in June, assuming that we'd have funds to pay for that. So again, I'd just like to see that all broken out so we know what the right amount is.
All right.
All right, motion to table?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. H, discuss possibly vote to request the finance committee to review and provide recommendations on the general fund balance policy. Commissioner Person.
Yeah, we talked about this at the last meeting when we approved the audit. I mentioned that the way it's set up now, let's say for the end of FY '25, the audit report, we had to show in our rainy day fund and in our unassigned fund, 50% for the rainy day fund of operating expenditures for the next fiscal year for FY '26. And for the unassigned fund, 15% of operating expenditures for FY '26. So what that means is at the end of the year, we kind of have to scramble around. We don't plan for having surplus funds in the fiscal year. When we planned for what we needed for FY '25, we didn't say, okay, well, we think we're going to need another couple hundred thousand dollars to satisfy the rainy day requirements and the unassigned requirements at the end of the year. It's just if we're lucky enough, you know, fortuitous, that that money will be there. In fact, most of it was there this year, not quite all of it. We did actually need about $200,000 more in the rainy day fund this year than we used for the previous year. And some amount of money, I forget exactly what it was, for the unassigned fund, but that had to be bigger as well. So the thought was, why aren't we planning this in a way so that the requirements are based on the current fiscal year? So that for FY '26, we simply leave the requirement the same throughout the year so that at the end of the year, we will have 50% of FY '26 operating expenditures in rainy day fund and 15% of operating expenditures in the unassigned fund. And then during the budget process for next year, we would actually build in periodic contributions, perhaps monthly, to both of those, or to the rainy day fund. So that at the end of FY '26, FY '27, we would actually have 50% of operating expenditures for FY '27 in the rainy day fund. So it gives us a way of planning specifically to satisfy those requirements by using the current fiscal year so that if there is additional operating money that's left over, it won't have any strings on it. We can reallocate it for other uses and we won't be tied to any additional requirements for the rainy day fund in the unassigned fund. So that's what I put together as a background document for today. And we'd like to have the finance committee take a look at that and see what their thoughts are about it. I think we should.
Anyone want to give a public comment?
I also need to comment, please, sir.
Yes, Commissioner Gibbings.
So this is on the agenda for the finance, investment and finance committee on November 11th and be able, to be able to address this, making sure that we stay within code and charter guidelines. Our town solicitor has been invited to join us.
Sorry, I didn't appreciate it. It's on the agenda for the finance committee.
Okay.
All right, it's already there then.
So I just want to, well, obviously it's easy enough to ask for, to send us to the finance committee, but I just want to make sure I understand, Commissioner Person, you're looking at it almost as if the 2026 performance will be the balance at the end of 2026 audit, that the, that six-month amount will be the actual amount. It will be the budget, not the future year amount.
That's right.
Okay. All right, it's easy.
Motion to send it to the finance committee. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Move to close the meeting. Four, Commissioner Comment, Commissioner Person.
No comments.
Commissioner Jazinski.
No comments.
Commissioner Bauer.
Just one. Dewey and Bloom is having their planning tomorrow. Ellen's going to be there helping us. We're putting you to work as well. Planning starts, we're going to pick up the fall flowers at 9:00 AM at the end of Van Dyke Street in the ocean.[1709.41]